Okay, welcome everybody to US government semester two study session. Today is August 17th, 2018. Thank you for joining us. We're going to be going over the final exam basically today. So let's just go ahead and jump right in. Make sure that you sign in using your first name. Send me a private chat with your first and your last name. That way you can be assigned extra credit. Also, please make sure that your microphone is muted. Your video is off unless you want those on to ask questions. You can turn those back on once you need to ask a question, but make sure they're muted for now. It also helps reduce the background noise for other students as well as for myself. And if you need to access all the navigation buttons in order to find that, make sure that you exit the full screen mode to access navigation buttons. And of course, if you want to use your audio, now's a good time to say hi. So I can hear you or to test to see if I can hear you. Also, can you all hear me? You can either say yes, or you can just type your chat in your chat box. Yes, I can hear you. Okay, can you all hear me? Okay, thank you very much. I got your name. Okay, some other expectations for this class. Make sure that you are participating and asking questions. Let me know if you cannot, also let me know if you cannot see my screen or what I am referring to while we're going through some of these assignments and through some of the final exam preparation questions. And then, of course, always be respectful of others, their questions, their abilities. We all learn in different ways and at different speeds, even me. All right, our agenda for today, we are going to be going over final exam study tips. We're going to be spending about 15 minutes on those. Then we're going to go ahead and do some Q and A for another 15 minutes. Second half of the class will be the final exam practice. We'll take a look at questions that are on the final exam. And of course, we'll have some extra time for questions at the end of the study session. So here are some final exam study tips. There are a total of 35 questions on the final exam. The types of questions, there's 30 multiple choice and five short answers. Passing grade for the final exam is a 60%. If you do not score at least 60%, you'll have to retake it. And we'll talk about that in just a second, about what happens on retakes. The final exam is worth 100 points and it's 10% of your overall grade. Keep in mind that if you are doing really well going into the final exam, the 10% of your grade shouldn't affect you too much. But if you're hovering between like a A or B, a C or D, or B or C, then those 10 points really are going to make a difference. So again, keep that in mind as you take your final exam. Of course, you have to pass at the 60%, but you also need to make sure that it's not going to affect the, that that 10% is not going to affect your overall grade too much. You can use one full page of notes on the final exam, front side only. So this is true not just for this class, but all your classes. Make sure that you are taking a full page of notes with you. That way you can find success for the final exam. And if you do not pass, so let's say you do not get a 60% the first time, you get to retake the final exam. And if you still don't score a 60%, then what we're going to do is your teachers, or in this case, if it's me, I'll work with you. If it's another teacher, even if I'm in another class, your teachers will work with you to complete what's called an alternate assessment. And you will be notified, you'll be notified through chat, through email, and you'll also be given feedback on an assignment, on the final exam that you may have failed for the second time. You'll be given feedback, so you will have instructions. And it could be that you are just redoing a couple of questions in order to help you pass. It could be that you're doing a PowerPoint or an essay. It just depends on what your teacher is going to ask of you. So the final exam rules and deadlines are the following. They must be taken in one sitting. So meaning that if you go to take your US government semester two final exam, you need to take it in one sitting. You cannot say, okay, I'm going to pause this and work on it tomorrow. That cannot be done. Or, you know, I think I'm just going to wait. I'm going to do a couple now and then wait until next week. Again, it has to be all in one sitting. There's a time limit of 90 minutes. And where you take the final exam, so how and where do I take the final exam? If you have a local advocate, it must be taken at the meetup. So you'll need to, if you're not sure when your meetup is, contact your academic coach and they will let you know. You can also, of course, contact your local advocate. If you do not have a local advocate, contact your academic coach. I have provided the number for you there on the screen. So make sure you contact them there at that number to find out, if you don't have a local advocate, how it is that you have to take your final exam. There is an expectation that final exams in all classes should be taken 30 days following the completion of a class. So meaning that you have submitted your last assignment for a class and all you have left to take is your final exam. You need to take the class or the final exam within 30 days of that last assignment. And this policy is designed to help you, of course, to be successful on the final exam. Because the more time that you wait to take a final, the less you're going to remember. And it's probably going to be not a very good experience for you if you're waiting more than 30 days because you're going to forget a lot of the material. There's also a three month limit. So if a final is not taken within three months of completing a class, you're going to have to start the class all over from the beginning. And I know that is a terrible thing, but three months. So let's say you've finished your class in July, October, and it's November and you still haven't taken the final exam, then you're going to be taking the class all over again. It's a lot of work, so please do not let that happen. And there is a final exam limit of four final exams. So what that means is if you have four or more overdue final exams, your academic coach will put a gate on your account. So you will not be able to add any more classes until you take at least one final exam. So please work with your coach. For some reason, you have more than four final exams. And if you cannot access your final exam or you have questions about these deadlines, please contact your academic coach as soon as possible. You can also contact your local advocate if you have a local advocate. And I have posted the phone number there for you on the phone or on the screen. So how to study for a final exam? There is a review guide at the very end of every course. If you click on, it's called the final exam study folder, you can find it there. And I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to show you what that looks like. Give me just a second while I get over there. Okay, you're going to click on the final exam study guide here. And there is your final exam study guide for US government semester two. You should always read through these. There is no doubt that this is going to help you tremendously on any final exam. So for example, here for US government semester two, it says, "In the past two sections, we have discussed many topics about civics. As you prepare to take the final exam, review your notes from the quizzes and activities. And reflecting on the following questions should guide you in successfully studying for your final exam." So there are a series of questions here that will help you review for the final exam. And I'm going to give you an example of what you can do in order to review these questions. So what I did was I took all these questions. I copied and pasted them into a Word document. And you can use Google Docs, you can use Word or Open Office, whatever you like to use. But I have essentially, I've taken these and I've copied and pasted them. Then what I did was I copied and pasted them. And I've already done this in advance, so that's why it looks like this. I copied and pasted them. And then what I did was I went back and I looked for the activities and the lessons that revolved around the questions. So if you look at one of the questions, it says, "What were the American ideals we reviewed?" So I went back to my class. And you can just get a general idea of what each activity, what each unit is about by looking just at the names. So let's take a look. What were the American ideals we reviewed? I know that there are an activity 4.1.1. Ideals. So what I did was I went to that assignment. Oh, sorry, that is the activity. You should definitely review the activity, but let's go back and let's look at the lesson. Okay, the lesson is "American beliefs and values." So I just went in, I read through it, and I focused on the question. So I just went through, I read each, through each page, and I took notes. I took notes on, okay, "The American ideals and values were thoughtful and effective participation, respecting human worth and dignity, and being an independent member of society." So that's one example. And then, of course, always review the activities that go along with the lessons. And then I also took a look at the next question. I did have a couple of examples for you here, so feel free to use these as part of your own notes after this presentation. So let's do one more example. What are the responsibilities of local government? Okay, so I know that local government is in lesson 7.1, "Current public issues." It talks about local government. So let's take a look at that lesson. And what are the responsibilities of local government? So I went through. And I took, I read about, okay, what is local government? And I clicked on each page. If you want to, you can read or you can review the videos. Definitely review the questions in the lessons. This will help you, these practice type questions. All right, and then I went back to my notes and I copied and I pasted what the responsibilities of local government are. So I put here, "Local governments have the authority to collect taxes, monitor recreation areas, have a police force zoning, budgeting, and any law needed to run their county, city, or township effectively." And then, of course, I reviewed activity 7.1.1, "Local government." Okay, so those are the notes there. Make sure that you are reviewing all assignments, whether they're auto graded assignments, meaning that they're the quizzes, the quiz type assignments that you took that you get instant feedback on, projects or essays. Keep in mind that anytime you complete an auto graded assignment, it's going to assign a grade to you. So let's say that you get an 80% on one of your quizzes. And then you redo it because you want to practice for the final exam and you get a lower grade. It's always going to retain your highest scoring assignment. So even if you got like a 50%, you don't need to worry. It's going to keep your high grade. But let's say you got a 50% the first time around, then you went to use that as a part of your study guide or part of your study process for the final exam, and then you got 100%. That's awesome. You are now going into the final exam with a higher grade. So keep that in mind. Review your assignments that are projects, essays, anything that's auto graded. Redo any low scoring work, meaning anything that you scored, like let's say a 60 or less on, please look and see what you missed and look for feedback. So always look for feedback on your assignments. See why you scored low, maybe some tips that your teacher has provided for you. So please redo any low scoring assignments so that you can be successful on the final exam. We do not have any students participating live anymore, so we're just going to go ahead and skip through the questions. If you're watching this video, the recorded video, you can contact me if you do have any additional questions as far as, you know, how many points the final exam is worth, what questions you have about the class in general. So how do you contact your teachers? So send me a chat and email. At the very end of this presentation, I'm going to have all my contact information. All right, let's look at some practice questions. These are sample questions from the test, meaning that they are actually on the test. So just by watching this video, you're going to have several questions answered for you. And you're going to have a little bit of a heads up on what is going to be on the exam. We're not going to go over everything, obviously, but this should definitely help you get a general understanding of what the exam is like and what's on there. So one of the sample questions is a multiple choice type question. You're going to see several multiple choice questions on this exam. And the example I have here, and again, this is a question from the test. Number one says, "This is when news gives you facts but misrepresents those facts." So is it A, distorting facts? B, emotional bias? C, checking for credibility? Or E, emotional appeal? If you are not sure about this answer, maybe what you want to do before you attempt to answer it is pause the video, go back to your class, and of course, look in the section that talks about misrepresenting facts, the news, the media, and find the answer before you, you know, show me or before I unveil the answer. So go ahead and pause the video if you want to do that. Okay, we're going to go ahead and reveal what the answer is. The answer is, oops, let's try this again. Distorting the facts. So the answer for this question is distorting the facts, A. So you'll be given a question. You'll need to pick from a list and you will pick the best answer. So in this one, in this case, there's only one correct answer. Okay, let's take a look at the next one. The next question is another type of question that you'll see on the test. It's true, false. And this means that you will answer either A, the statement is true, or B, the statement is false. So for this example, "Nonviolent civil disobedience is refusing to follow certain laws in a peaceful manner in order to influence change." Now, is answer A, true or B, false? Again, if you're watching the video, pause it. You can think about it, or you can go back and you can look for the definition of nonviolent civil disobedience. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and provide the answer. And the answer is A, true, yes. Nonviolent civil disobedience does mean refusing to follow certain laws in a peaceful manner in order to influence change. Okay. Another sample question includes all of the above options. So what this means is that you're going to be given a list of answers, and it could be a single answer or it could be all of them. So in this case, the question is, and for this one, I did not provide the answer, but you can still go back to the lessons and look for this so that you can add it to your study guide or your notes for your final exam. Question is, what makes someone a good political leader? So is it A, leading by example? B, manages themselves and others well? C, inspires those around them? Or is it D, all of the above? So is it just one of those or is it D, all of the above? So make sure that you go back and you refer to lessons about leadership. Okay, you're also going to see questions that involve matching. You're going to, in this example, you're going to match the correct pairs. So on the left hand side, you're going to see a statement. And then on the right hand side, you're going to see an answer. So you have to pick which one of those is the best answer. So for number one, it says, "Writing letters to a governor or president." Now, is that an example of political participation or is it an example of social participation? So you will need to go back to the lesson on political and social participation and find the answer for this. And again, you can put this on your notes for your final exam. So question number one, "Writing letters to a governor or a president," is that example of A or B, a political participation or B, social participation? And then question number two asks, "Participating in community cleanup day." Now, is that political participation or is it social participation? Again, make sure you go back and review the section on this topic if you are not sure. You're going to see questions which, or sorry, you're going to see some questions where the answer might have more than, there might be more than one answer. So in the example here, you are given a question. The question is, "If you are not a leader, how can you still influence politics?" So if you look and see, there's A, B, C, D, and E. And at D and E, it says both A and C or both B and C. So if you are not a leader, how can you still influence politics? Is it A, you can't? Only people in power can influence politics? Is it B, you can still stay educated about the topic and influence others in smaller ways? C, you can still join political groups and express your ideas and knowledge at meetings? Or is it D, both A and C? Both A and C? Or is it E, both B and C? That one's a little bit tricky. But there is a correct answer. And make sure that you go back and you look at the section on leadership and influencing politics. All righty, we're now going to turn our attention to the short answer questions. There are five short answer questions on this exam. So please make sure that you are writing these down so that you are prepared. I'm going to provide these, the questions for you. In the first couple of ones, I will tell you which unit to refer to. But after this, you will need to go ahead and do this on your own as part of preparing for the final exam and using that final exam study guide. So short answer, question number one. "American ideals covered in this course were thoughtful participation, respect for human worth and dignity, and being independent members of society. In at least three complete sentences, provide one example for each ideal listed above. Include the reason why you believe the example is a good fit." So I know that I need to have at least three complete sentences. So this is a very important part of this final exam study session is, you know, of course, providing the questions, but also teaching some study skills. So when you're reading this question, ask yourself, "Do I understand the question? What is expected of me?" So I know that I need to write at least three complete sentences, all right? And I have to provide one example for each ideal listed above. Well, how many ideals do we have? We have thoughtful participation, one, respect for human worth and dignity, two, and being independent members of society, three. And you need to include the reason why you believe the example is a good fit. So again, don't just read the question. See what is expected of you, what you need to write, if you have to have examples, and if you have to explain why your examples are a good fit. And for this question, you're going to refer to unit four, "American beliefs and ideals." So again, this question will be on the exam. Make sure that you're paying attention to how much you have to write and what you have to write about. Okay, this one is a very short one. So this is kind of a nice break from the essay or from the short answer questions. This question asks, "What are two responsibilities of local government?" All right, so again, ask yourself to understand the question. In this case, I have to list responsibilities of local government. And how many examples do I need to give? Two. So what are two responsibilities of local government? And if you were paying attention earlier in this study session, we did talk about the responsibilities of local government as part of the note taking example. You can also refer to unit seven, "Citizenship and Action", to look over the responsibilities of local government. So this one's pretty straightforward. Okay. These are a little bit more complicated looking when you get to the final exam. So it's good that you are here and you're understanding what, what these short answers will look like and how to read them. So for short answer question number three, you are asked to write five to seven sentences. So keep that in mind. You will be graded based on how much you are writing, if of course, there is a minimum. And in this example, we have listed a minimum of how many sentences you need to write. Okay, "Reflect on American beliefs and values. What are the most important aspects of American beliefs to you? Critically explain why you feel this way, providing evidence, details back from this course and from your learning." So what are the most important aspects of American beliefs to you? Explain why you feel this way. Use evidence and details from the course. So you know that you have to answer the question and explain using evidence from the class. Now, you can, you're given a format to follow, which is really nice. That way you know how, or at least how to organize your writing for this assignment. And in the final exam, you're going to see this. You're going to see, please follow this format as a guide. So you're going to have your topic sentence. And your topic sentence can be based off of the question. So what are the most important aspects of American beliefs to you? And your topic sentence can be, "The most important aspects of American beliefs to me are..." And then the guide here outlines it as having a concrete detail, specific evidence, another concrete detail, your commentary opinion, and your concluding sentence. So again, this is just to help you out. You don't have to follow it. It's just going to help you organize your thoughts a lot better if you are struggling. So this question again asks you to reflect on American beliefs and values and which ones you think are the most important. Now, if you look down here, you're also going to see in this question, a rubric. And a rubric is essentially, it just means it's a guide that's going to show you how you will score based on the information you have provided. So if you have, you know, provided the content and your organization, if your content is engaging and shows critical thinking on the topic and specific evidence is provided from the lessons in the course, you're going to get an A. And if you have a clear topic sentence with engaging concrete details, commentary, and an obvious concluding sentence, you're going to get an A. So these two things need to be met in order to get an A. To get a C, it says, "Content is on topic and shows evidence from lessons in the course." Now, if you notice, this is different than showing, it's engaging and showing critical thinking. This just says it's on topic and shows evidence. And the organization is followed. It's not just engage, it's not engaging. It doesn't have a commentary. It just says the organization is followed. Then you're going to get a C. And then if your content does not meet, the, sorry, excuse me, content does not follow prompt given or provide evidence and the organization is not followed, you are going to get an F. So keep this in mind. Look at this rubric when you're answering these short answer questions. Okay, short answer question number four. It's very similar to the last one you just saw. So you're going to be given the question, the amount of sentences, what you need to include. So the So the instructions are up here. How to organize your question, your essay, or sorry, your short answer. And then, of course, the rubric. How you will score based on the information you have provided, an A, a C, or an F. So for this question, again, you're asked to answer in five to seven sentences. "Discuss how you think we as a country access information from the news, media, and other sources. Analyze how we also as a country can come to wildly different conclusions based on the same set of information and events, such as climate change or guns in America." Okay, so this question has to do with media and it has to do with gathering information on politics and on events. Basically, you're going to find this information in the section on the news and media. So make sure that you go back to that section of the class so that you can prepare yourself for this assignment. And again, you're going to discuss how we access information as a nation. And you're going to analyze how we come to wildly different conclusions based on the same set of information and events. And short answer, number five, again, same format, different question. This one is an election scenario. You're going to answer in five to seven sentences. "Pretend that you are planning to vote in an important state election in your district. The two candidates for office have no known political party affiliation." So meaning they are not a Democrat, they are not a Republican, they have no known party affiliation. "Explain how you will evaluate each of the candidates. What would you look for as evidence of their ability to do a quality job in office? Provide details, cite evidence, and be specific." So make sure that you are reviewing this section of the class about selecting candidates, becoming involved, being a responsible citizen. So it's an election scenario. And you are going to need to pretend that you are planning to vote in an important state election. Again, explain how you will evaluate each of the candidates. What would you look for as evidence of their ability to do their job? And provide details, cite evidence, and be specific. A guide, a format has been provided for you again. Same exact format with the topic sentence, two concrete details, commentary, and a concluding sentence. And of course, you have a rubric. So those are the five short answer questions. Again, make sure that you write those down on the notes that you're gonna be using for the final exam because those questions will be on the exam. And once again, if you do have questions about the final exam, please contact me. Also, if you have ideas for study sessions, what would you like to see in the future for this class and for social studies? Please let me know. My contact information for any questions or comments that you might have about the class, the final exam, or these study sessions. Again, my name is Mrs. Gonzalez. My phone number and text number are 724-913-63, or sorry, 3621. So that's 724-913-3621. There is my email address. Please make sure that you spell my last name correctly. There are different ways to spell Gonzalez. Mine is with a Z at the end. If you spell Gonzalez or Edna incorrectly, or even Graduation Alliance, I will not get your email. So if you don't hear from me within 24 hours, that's during the weekdays because we do not work weekends. If you don't hear me, hear from me, I'm, I either haven't gotten your message because my name was misspelled or maybe I'm on vacation. It could be that, but most of the time it is from students who misspell my name or graduationalliance.com. My office hours are Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM Eastern. So please feel free to contact me during those hours if you do need help. Actually, if so long, if you're sending me a chat message from your classes or an email or even a text message, I, I don't check those after hours. But I will get back to you as soon as I'm back online or I'm back in the office the following day, so long as it's Monday through Friday. If you send a chat like Friday after 5:00 PM Eastern time, which is what I'm on, or over the weekend, I'm not gonna see that until Monday. So keep that in mind. I'm not ignoring you. I just like to enjoy my weekends. I work hard during the week. So I like to enjoy my weekends as well. It's been a pleasure. Thank you very much for attending the study session today. And I hope to see you at future study sessions. Thank you, bye-bye.